Good evening, welcome to the Bank and Select Board meeting this evening of February 10th, 2020. My name is Donald Campbell, I'm the Chair of this board, and I would like to have the members introduce themselves, please, but why don't we start at my far left with our famous note taker?
Nancy Lydely, Secretary.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Bruce Lee Clark.
And I'm Stuart Hurrtown Manager.
So Jim will be, Jim Carroll will be coming along soon, he's probably going to be an hour late, and Jean was here but had to leave for just a minute, she'll be back shortly with some of the papers she left at home, so she'll be back with that. So the first item of business is to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and Bruce, would you be willing to lead us in this tonight, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the island states of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, withveritie, and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. So we are going to start with item number two, our Consent Agenda, which are the minutes of January 27th as circulated, and the warrants. As always, if you have not had a chance to talk to Stuart about any of your warrant questions beforehand, now is the time to do it, even though he's walking off, he'll be coming back, I don't think he's anticipating any hard questions, since we like to get those to him offline. Oh, yeah, thank you. So we have, yes, minutes and warrants, do I have a motion for the purposes of discussion on this?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so any discussion about either the minutes or the warrants? No? Okay. All in favor of this consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you Nancy, nice job in the minutes, once again. The next item of business is public comment. We have two people tonight. I would just remind everybody that public comment is a time for you to bring your thoughts to in front of the Select Board, we ask you not to talk about things that are already on the agenda, to limit your comments to under three minutes, and to refrain from making any personal attacks, please. The first person on our list is Colleen Harrington, recently in the news.
I just had a quick question that some citizens asked me to ask and to get the answer on record, and the question was whether you, Mr. Campbell, or your family members had any investments in the Putnam block?
Well, as you know, we don't do question and answer citizens' comment, but I can tell you that that's an easy one, the answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah. Next is Kevin Hoey.
Thank you again, Kevin Hoey, citizen of Bennington. Recently, this last summer, the Select Board had approved a $66,000 investigation into the Bennington Police Department, and I'm interested in seeing those results, I know they're in, we were told we were going to hear from them, so again, I'm interested in that, and along the same lines, I've been doing my own investigations, there's a thing called value engineering that happens in construction all the time when we go back and look at our spending, so I'd like to propose an audit of town spending by an outside source, again, this is a real audit, not where you guys give them the numbers, but the auditor actually goes and look, because I think just about everything we spend is doubled, so again, I'd like to suggest maybe we spend half as much as we spent investigating our police department, maybe $33,000, find an outside source and look at our own incredible town spending, thank you.
The next item that we are going to cover tonight is the Local Options Tax First Discussion, and we'll be having a full-length meeting on this topic next Monday night in this location, Cat TV is going to be here, is that right? Okay, so, and this is a tricky issue, it's, you would probably not believe the wide range of responses we've heard to this from the community, everything, all sorts of, all sorts of extremes, but at the end of last meeting, Chad, I think rather, in his good way, brought up the point, and I'll read this out of the minutes, "Maybe after we have our additional public hearings in February, we could decide the percentage of how the money is spent for whichever taxes pass, thereafter the determination of how it could be used would be done at budget discussion time in January." And building off of that a little bit, we had a number of interviews, I know that Shannon Barsati spent a lot of time out in the community, as have Jeanne and I and others, and Jeanne, Shannon wrote this memo, and I think I might just read it because it's probably, it probably sets up this conversation fairly nicely, it's a Local Options Tax Revenue Spending Guidelines Policy, and it says, "In talking with various community groups, one area of consensus about the proposed local options tax is that many community members do not want to see the potential revenue from a local options tax going into the general fund without being designated for specific investments. Many also want to have the opportunity to discuss the use of these funds at public meetings. One suggestion was for the Select Board to create a spending guidelines policy that establishes two public meetings during the budget season to designate spending categories for local tax, local options tax revenue in the coming fiscal year. Policy language could include," and Shannon offered us a little bit of suggested language here, "The Bank and Select Board recognizes the importance of community dialogue and input during the annual budget sessions and will establish two additional public meetings every year during budget season to designate spending guidelines for any revenue created from a local options tax." So that's kind of, starts with you a little bit Chad, it's kind of the thread that carries through, and then we've also asked the town manager to give us a piece of paper, which any of you that saw the board packet will see, which is essentially what might look like a draft, a proposed spending guidelines, and so this is, this would be the town staff's priorities, priorities I would support, but also, I think, priorities that can be flexible as we hear from the public about what should or shouldn't happen. So just to summarize, I think what I'd like the board to consider is adopting a written policy along the lines of what Chad suggested, which is that at budget season every year we have public meetings in which we, if an options tax passes, this is all based on if it passes, that we have a series of public meetings that people can come to and talk about community priorities, and that we set up, good evening Jim, we set up the spending guidelines for the options tax funding for that year after that meeting, so that every year, the then sitting Select Board would be overseeing how the money gets spent, but the public would also have a chance to oversee it, and we're hoping that, I'm hoping that that might be something that would have, get these two goals done, which is to establish how the money would be spent if an options tax was passed in the coming year, but also leave the flexibility, which a lot of people have really been strong about, for future Select Boards to make the important decisions, and for the general public to be able to weigh in on a predictable basis. So any, before we go into the general conversation, any comments from the board on how that sounds? I realize that Jean and Jim just walked in, so don't expect you to...
So I'm really, I'm really in favor of doing this, and I like doing it during budget season because then we know what's coming up, we know if we have priority items, like finding out that Willow Park really needs to be redone, is there something that we really need to address that is not in the normal budget, I think it also lets us look at whether we can put more or less toward property tax reduction, depending on what other items are really calling our attention, and I think it looks, the suggestions that you've made, the debt reduction, is that putting money aside so we can buy a truck outright instead of having to...
Actually, the suggestion relates to the amount of debt we're currently carrying in the budget.
Okay.
Where we are buying, we're borrowing from the highway fund at the state level to purchase vehicles that are used during the highway.
Yeah.
It would be to reduce that debt so that ultimately we would be able to buy those vehicles outright.
Okay, all right.
It's the same end.
Yeah, I get it, so sometime in the future, we would get to that point, but right now we're going to do so.
But it would reduce the budget on an annual basis by whatever amount that we're carrying.
Yeah, I think this is, I mean, I think this is a really nice strategy, and it feels like until we get into budget season, we will never, we won't know what's in front of us, and what our costs might be for anyone for the upcoming year, so, so thank you Chad, I like it.
Further on the debt reduction, Stuart, you mentioned at the last meeting, I think, or the meeting before, that we pay roughly $40,000 a year in interest income on, or maybe it was Melissa, Melissa's memo that talked about that, and that some of that debt could be retired, and therefore we would be paying less interest, and that would reduce our expenses as well.
That's correct, the only, the only, the only things we can't pay off faster than we would normally want to are bonds, because the bonds are sold into the market, and that interest and those payments are set, so, but we're looking at those short-term purchasing issues through the highway fund, or through other funds, where we borrow in the short term to buy a particular piece of equipment, so we don't impact the budget dramatically, but it does cost us over time, generally in the seven to 10-year range, those debts could be retired over time, relatively quickly, I would hope.
Other comments?
Yeah.
Bruce?
I'm, I would be in favor of Chad's notion, I was then and I am now, for a couple of reasons, but first, the process question, which you may come to expect, and that is, I'm trying to figure out, are we trying to fashion a policy, a spending guidelines policy first to not, I mean, so, there's that, and it would seem to me that that, we couldn't adopt that until...
We're not, we're not doing that.
Right, so I just want to make clear to everybody else and to me, what it is where you're asking us to discuss.
Well, I'll talk about it the next three meetings, so my thought tonight is that we decide whether this is a good idea, this idea of a local options tax revenue spending guidelines policy, so there's something written, something that goes into our policy document.
Right.
Something that people could look at and could have input on, something admittedly that the Select Board could change, like all of our policies, but there would be a higher bar to it, because it would have to go through the open meeting process and the whole difficult piece on that, so my thought tonight is that we decide whether or not we like the idea of creating a spending guidelines policy, and then we maybe spend a little more time listening to what people have to say tonight, we only have about half an hour tonight, and then we really focus at the next meeting, the longer meeting, on community priorities, what people think is important, and then at the last meeting we pull together what would essentially be a draft spending guideline for the 2020 tax year, 2020, 2021 tax year.
As well as a policy.
As well as a policy.
As well as, well, no, so at the next meeting, I'd love to ask if Shannon would be willing to bring some sort of draft, or Stuart bring some sort of draft in for us to look at, that would be a policy, then we could, then we...
So that, that would be next week?
Yeah, it would be next Monday, yeah.
So that we would probably get a chance to see that by the end of this week?
Yeah, but it's not going to be very complicated.
Well, we have a draft policy here.
I see the language, I saw the language that Shannon wrote, and I think that's the beginning of a good policy, I'd want to, I still want to think through, and I always think there's an advantage to thinking through those, what additional steps we may want to put in a policy that would...
Absolutely.
I'm just wondering, can we, can we wait to make final decisions until the third meeting, and all, I mean, so basically, I mean, on the third meeting, can we, can we do that vote?
The end of this month meeting?
Yeah, because that allows next week to be, just, let's just, like, have every thought in the world out there, and then the next meeting, bring it back in.
That makes sense to me, I, that would make sense to me.
And vote in, yeah.
Yeah, so, but next meeting, I'd like, I'd like to, you know, if people like this idea and feel this would be open, and feel this would be a predictable system that would have public input and would also be fair.
Yep.
Then we could look at the spending policy guideline next week, next Monday, and we could tweak it as necessary, and ratify it at our following meeting, and next Monday we could spend most of our time working with the community on the sort of percentages of, if this thing gets passed, how should we spend the money, and, you know, that's hypothetical, it may not get passed at all, and I think it's very possible that some of the feedback we get next Monday will be, I don't like it, I don't want it, or I like it, I want it, but we may not get the specific kind of feedback we want, but we'll sort through that. So I guess tonight, all I'm hoping is, does this seem like a good approach, and if it does seem like a good approach, shall we ask staff to come up with a draft proposal for next week?
Can I just ask a question, you may have answered while I was running home getting my packet, can you just speak to the amount of flexibility in this draft policy here?
This is just for demonstration.
I know, I didn't mean this, did you, did you speak to the amount of flexibility? So each year we would revisit?
Yes, right.
Thank you.
So the tension is, the tension is, if you set up earmarks, you know, if we set it up so that the options money has to be spent a certain way, no future board can easily change that.
Right.
Sort of sending it back to a full vote, and so that's undesirable, because every elected board should have the right to do their elected duty.
And needs change.
Right. On the other hand, there are a lot of people who want to know that if this options tax goes through, that it's going to be wisely spent, and they want to know how it would be spent before they vote for or against it, and so this is meant to be a way of threading that needle, of allowing future Select Boards, the discretion to be able to do, make decisions, but also setting up a written policy that would hold their, all future Select Boards' feet to the fire, and say, look, we're going to do a public process, just like Rattler Borough does.
So the policy is really about the public process?
Policy is about the public process, and the, what I would say would be the result of the public process, would essentially be a list of percentages, so it could be, it will be probably different every year, depending on the needs of the community, does that make sense?
It makes total sense, I just wanted to clarify for myself and anyone else out there who may be a little confused.
Right. Chad?
Maybe for next week or the week after, because I won't be here next week, a public, I'm trying to think of an actual figure, like, if, using an estimate of if this revenue is a million dollars, how would the, you know, property tax reduction impact someone's property tax bill if their bill was 100, you know, if their home's value is 100,000, what would the impact on their actual tax? I'm just trying to make the math easy, so people can see that.
Right off the cuff, a penny is 100,000 dollars, so if you propose to put 600,000 dollars against the budget, then you're going to reduce the tax rate by six cents, plus your minus, that's where, that's where we are right now with our tax rate, and that's only the town tax rate, it doesn't affect the school tax rate.
You know, so Stuart, we chatted you about this, but, you know, the way you talk about the penny is the correct way to talk about it, but I think most people think of it in terms of a percentage, what are my taxes doing, are they going up or down as a percentage, and so maybe next week we could, to Chad's point, maybe we could get a little bit more specific, with some examples about what that would be in a percent format, recognizing that it's difficult, because everybody has a different, this is kind of a sliding scale, income scale thing about property taxes, but if you were to do no income adjustment, say, what would, what would the impact of this be if we were to do that, would that be helpful, Chad, is that kind of what you're getting at? Board members, are there other things that we feel like we would like the town staff, besides a draft revenue spending policy and the data that Chad just asked for, is there anything else that we'd like next week from town staff?
The data on other towns that have implemented this, and the positives, and if there are negatives, and any negatives.
Yeah, so maybe be a little bit more specific on what you exactly we want, so we don't make too much work for them to, what are we trying to get?
Hard data from, I guess specifically, I'm thinking about the small businesses that some people have voiced concern, that they're worried that it's going to affect their bottom line, and I'd like to see how that played out in other communities, and if indeed it did or it didn't, and it needs to be a community that's similar to ours, demographically, I would think.
Shannon has put together a two or three, four-page document, where she went and looked at other communities, specifically Wilmington, Killington, Rutland City, Rattler Borough, and she took some of the articles, some of the quotes that are out of the Vermont Digger articles regarding those particular communities, and also the town of Middlebury.
Did we get that?
No, you didn't, you'll have it for the 17th, which is the meeting where I think it's going to be important.
Okay, great.
So, yes, we're moving in that direction, and you'll see it all.
Okay.
Never mind, it's already done.
Well, it's in the works anyway, Jim, you had something you wanted to say a while ago, and you didn't get back to it.
Just that, you know, I've listened to quite a few constituents about this, and the one thing that I kept hearing over and over again is that, you know, they're not necessarily opposed to the option tax, what they, what they really want to know is what percentage of the revenue would go toward lowering property taxes, and, you know, what I've suggested with people is that it's at least 50% of whatever we generate, in addition to that, let's say we have earmarks for one or two or three or five projects that we discuss in an open meeting on a quarterly basis, rather than a yearly basis, and that anything that goes unused with respect to, you know, some pet project, for lack of a better phrase, anything that is left unused goes toward property taxes, when it's all said and done on a quarterly basis.
Jim, so I think maybe go to the next page after that one?
I did.
And so I think that is really what we're going to do at the next, at the next meeting, is say...
Okay, I know I came in late.
You know, so here's a, yeah, so here's a, and that's just an idea, but, you know, and, which does put property tax at 50%, but it would be, for instance, we were hearing pretty loud and strongly from the business community that marketing was a really high priority for them, so, you know, 10%, this is has 10, this is just making it up, right, but this has 10% marketing, it may be there are other people who are saying, I want it to be 70% marketing and, you know, 20% property tax, but I, I think this is a really good conversation for the community to have, because if we go down the route of an option tax, then we want to know that it's doing the community the good that we intend, so...
And further, I think, Jim, that's a good point, Jean, but also, I know you're in government, but I think earmark is not quite the right word for this, you know, it feels to me like we're looking for a guideline that has community buy-in on how this money would be spent, but not, not, it's not pork, it's not, you know, debt reduction, for example, at some level, debt reduction is property tax reduction, because it's taking, it's taking the expense of running a town, and it's making that expense less, and therefore the request of the property tax owners less. Similarly, at Community Bill Park, we are going to probably next year either have to take down Willow Park or replace it, if we, if we replace it, and I've heard people say, well, the community should do that, but nobody in the community has stepped up yet to do that, but if, if the town continues the tradition of having a really strong park there, that also would come out of the budget, so that would add to the tax increase unless we were to anticipate it, so at some level, some level, all of this gets back to what, how property taxes are calculated.
I think we did hear from at least one person pretty strongly, and believe me, I'm all in favor of reducing property taxes, but I think we need to not forget about the people that don't own property, and they won't benefit from a property tax reduction, and the Community Bill Park is a perfect example, that's something that reaches a whole different, not a whole different demographic, but people that can enjoy the park and bring their families to the park if they're not going to enjoy the property tax reduction.
Right.
So I think we need to be mindful of that group of people.
Well, that's right, we have to put ourselves in the spectrum, so some people say they want nothing to happen with that money except for tax reduction, and then Jonah came in here and said, want nothing to happen with that money except really big exciting things with Bennington, you know?
Lynn said that, too.
And I think Mike Bethel's proposing, we buy Southern Vermont College, you know, so the range is really wide at this point between what we should do with these different things, so...
And I would suggest that we don't reject any of those out of hand.
Well, that's the conversation we're having.
That's the conversation, really, I understand, so, that we would have, so, my point being that the community's range is very wide, and it's our job to figure out of all these different priorities, what would be the highest priority, assuming any part of it gets passed.
And you're right.
And none of it may pass.
And you're right, I mean, a reduction in property tax is going to allow other things to bubble up, so...
So does that seem like a good approach to our big open meeting next week, to, Stuart, I think whatever you have from Shannon, that would be great to make that as public as possible, whatever you come up with, Shannon, if you're willing to do this, it'd be great to, you know, have that out there, and we'll take it up next week, does that sound good? Okay, so, comments from the public, all right, so let's start with Matt, you want to come up, introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind, please.
Matt Willie, I'm a business owner in town, so can you guys just clarify that for me real quick?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just, I just want to make sure I get it right, so the guideline that Chad put out would be, would be, Stu would say, these are the percentages that we're looking for, you guys vote on it, you hear from us?
No.
No.
So what we're suggesting is that we set up, there's two-step process, so the first step would be to set up a policy, a written policy, you know, we have all these different policies on how we conduct our business, and one would be a written policy that says every year before prior to budget time, that we will have, you know, at least two public meetings so that everybody can weigh in on how the options tax, what the priorities in the community might be for the options tax, and that that become a standing policy so that citizens could expect that to happen every year, and then the second piece is, what would we do next year, you know, in this coming tax year, it would start July 1st, if any part of this passed, and how would this sitting board break down the percentages, and so Stu, I asked Stuart to give us an example of what would, what he felt would benefit the community, but that's just a starting point, that's just a piece for discussion, and so the meeting next Monday night, and the following meeting, I think we would, and in between, I think we would hope to hear from the citizenry and begin to sort out what the spending guidelines would be, so there'd be a spending policy which would be standing, and then there'd be a spending guidelines which would be created every year with the then sitting Select Board and whatever citizenry decided to show up, that makes sense.
What would the starting piece be, though, like, how would that start, you know what I mean, like, 50% would go to tax, like, the 70% we have, who would start that conversation?
I think we have that next week, I think we have a conversation next week when we really, you know, people come and say what their priorities are, and to be honest with you, it's not like we've just been sitting around, we've been hearing from a lot of people on this, so we've, we're already collecting a lot of input on this, but we're having an open meeting next week specifically for that, for people to come in, and that, people, you know, like Jonah to come in and say, I think this should happen, or like you, I think this should happen, I think this should happen, ultimately, it's going to be up to us to figure out how we would propose to break it down for 2020, but I think the, what we were coming up against is that people didn't want to vote for this without knowing, and this is fair, without knowing how it would be... vote for this without knowing, and this is fair, without knowing how it would be spent in this coming year, so we, we can create a policy that says, well, next budget season, we're going to work together with the community, but people wanted to know, yes, but what about this year? So that's, that's what we're looking at there.
Perfect, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Again, it's, it's kind of odd to me, you guys sit here and you talk about debt reduction, right? When we can't keep up with your overspending as it is, I adamantly oppose this tax, adamantly oppose it, right? The one thing that is absolutely clear is that you guys ultimately get to decide, right? This is one of the reasons that I'm asking for this town audit, when we spend $100,000 on a pocket park and we're paying $900 for a $100 tree or $2,000 for a $500 bench and we buy four of them, I'm sorry, but I can't trust you guys to spend this money wisely anymore. If you want a priority, that's your other word, I'm speaking for behalf of the people and I'm telling you, the priority every day for most of us is survival, how are we going to pay the mortgage, how are we going to eat, and if you want, my opinion, we should be setting on reducing the cost of living, i.e. taxes, and I think your spending is a big part of that, I'd like to have that audit and look at that, thank you.
I'd like to say something, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Hoyt, you know, I've heard through quite a few people that you've said that the, the pocket park was paid for by, no, let me finish.
I want you to stay on the.
I will. Was paid for by, it is, was paid for by property taxpayers, it wasn't, not one dime of it, the pocket park was, the property itself was donated by a private individual and the money that was generated for that park was done privately and donated to the BBC, not a dime.
Now, in.
Not a dime, not a dime, let me finish, don't interrupt.
Okay.
Not a dime came from property taxpayers for that park, that is fault.
Okay, and again, you guys, that's not true, Jim, I think you're.
It's true.
We're under the public and again, we found, we found the law that says you guys stop doing this, right?
Hands here, he can.
John Shannon, I'd like to verify how he borrowed the town, you know, let's figure the town, let me finish, now, please don't ignore it, please.
Let's not let it degrade.
The town was borrowed by the BBC and the local town of Bennington, so I'd like to know how he borrowed the town, and I see his hours for the 113 hours, because I don't believe he ever did it, but he borrowed the state in kind just so I could reach our $50,000 limit and, and get the state grant, so in turn, we have people looking for the BBC and the town that are lying out to the state so that we can steal it from them and make these projects happen, Mr. Carr, you can't explain the $2,000 benches, why not?
I'm not going to cut you off because we're talking about the options tax tonight, you're right.
This is how we're going to spend it again, and I can answer Chad's comment, too, as far as the property tax, because you guys already did that in the last meeting, $100,000, you're going to get roughly $900 back, so almost 1%, we'll say 1%, you guys just raised our property tax by 3%, so if you put them in town now, if you put all of us into property tax, which you're not going to, basically the people only have to pay 2% this year in a single year on top of the school tax, what's that, 8%? Soccer tax, fire tax, 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 we can't afford it, thanks.
Well, as you know, many of those taxes, many of those things are beyond our control, so over half of the cost of the increase in services this year, we can attribute directly to a 12% increase in healthcare costs, now, I'm not saying that that's, I'm not saying that that's not something we should be paying attention to, I think we should be paying attention to it carefully, but it's also one of those things that we have to, as a community, really be aware of, that there are many costs to these services, so I'm going to look for other comments tonight, is there anyone else that would love to speak? You're done, thank you. Come on up.
Please sit down.
Pick a project, we're responding home.
The same time, 6 o'clock, yeah, same time, right here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, we should have, we should have made that clear, so, other comments?
Can I read the letter?
Oh, you have something you want to read, so, other comments from the audience? Come on up.
I just would like to state that I just feel that this is not the right time to impose another tax on the citizens of Bennington County, how can we possibly reduce the tax burden by adding another tax? There's some polls out there where 73% of the people don't want the tax, there's a new poll out there from Southern Vermont that 90% of the people don't want the retail tax, the, the citizens would like real numbers such as the real ratio with the real numbers and data, with the except, with the exemptions that are excluded from the sales tax to see what the real income would be coming into this, the town, and I did some research on some other states, too, and Pennsylvania was a big one I looked at and what most of them found is in the end, the sales tax mostly was coming from community members, that revenue from tourists did not play a big portion into the sales tax, so again, it's going to hit the community the hardest and I believe that there's a lot more discussions with verified documentation and data and this is not the time to try to force a tax onto an already struggling community, the poorest members of the community will be hit the hardest and I believe there's alternatives for communities and the option tax is not a sustainable option, the simple fact that it's being sold as a pipe dream that property taxes will decrease, there's no guarantee this will happen, even if there's a slight decrease that's occurred, it's not sustainable and property taxes will end up going, increasing and going back up within a couple of years and I think maybe a bigger study with a graph that shows a 10-year projection for property tax reduction and also a production of the two numbers that would come from the community needs to be discussed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Bruce has a, what, go ahead.
Just, can we clarify, does this retail sa, sales number include taxable and non-taxable sales or is this?
No, you already backed out, so this, Stuart, on this number that you gave us back in early January, these estimates, you had already backed out the items that would not be taxable, which is most, many items.
The state information that they provide is, is taxes that are, that are charged, it does not include things which are exempt, obviously.
Right. Okay, so to Colleen's point, this number is the number with, the number that you were given earlier is the number with the exempt items already backed out, so these are only the taxable items.
And just so everybody remembers, the exempt items is this list that came from the state of, which has grown over the years of.
It's readily available.
It's readily available.
It's on our website.
It's on our website.
Is there an exception to the actual revenue or is that paperwork on your website?
It's on the website.
Yes, all the, all the exemptions for clothing and shoes and scarves and, you know, all these different things.
Wedding dresses.
Wedding dresses, whatever, all these exemptions are, are very well documented, almost.
Not statewide.
In ridiculous detail, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
State rule.
So Bruce, did you have a lovely one to read and I have to move on to the next item.
I know you do, and this will, this will not take very long, it's already been alluded to, so I thought I'd at least read the letter that I received from a constituent here and you'll know who he is. "To the people of Bennington and the select board, I have an idea that I want to share with the select board and the people of Bennington that was initiated by the local option tax discussion and the loss of a buyer for Southern Vermont College. Rather than spend great sums of money for a second phase at the rec center, the town could do all this and more for less money by simply buying Southern Vermont College. In so doing, this important property would remain for the use and improvement of life for everybody in Bennington. It is projected that any additional, any addition to the current rec center could cost, could cost between $5 and $7 million. We, the citizens of Bennington, could float a bond for $5 million and would have a gym, a baseball field, other fields and trails for recreation, other facilities and a mansion. We could pay off the bond with the proceeds from the local option tax. Could Bennington pull this off? I believe it could. I have just begun to paint a picture and those who are intrigued by this idea could go to Southern Vermont today and read and see a bigger description of what this might mean and also wait an upcoming article in the Bennington banner, including an idea of connecting the Southern Vermont College campus to downtown utilizing a gondola, that's an enclosed chairlift. There are many other ideas which could be triggered by such a discussion. I would support a local option tax to go for this purpose. I would not support the local option tax except to support the purchase of SBC. Should we move forward with this idea, people would now have a reason to get off the highway, the new highway, to visit downtown Bennington year-round. It is important to dream big and imagine all the possibilities to improve the life of Bennington. Let's keep the discussion going. Sincerely, Mike Bethel, Bennington, Vermont." I would just add, as a member of the board, I, I agree with a lot of the different options that people have suggested to me personally as interesting and worth considering and one of the things I would ask the entire, not just us, but everybody who's listening to this, is to keep their minds open and not shut down things just because they come from a particular person that they like or don't like or, or close down their minds because some particular idea seems absolutely absurd at the moment, lots of ideas that start out absurd actually turn out to be pretty darn good, including this country, by the way, so we might, that's, that's just, just a concept for us to be thinking about as we move into this next week, I, I know that we're all listening to our constituents, it is ultimately our decision, I'm, I'm okay with that, that is to say, the percentages are our decision and just keep an open heart and open mind, it's really important in this discussion, thanks.
Can I just say?
Sure.
Because the door's been opened, if there's anyone that isn't going to be here next week that wants to speak, because I thought we were going to hold thoughts about how the money should be apportioned to the meeting next week, but I'm just thinking, I mean, Matt raised that question, are you, is there, is there anyone that isn't able to speak next week that would like to share information now publicly about how they want to see the, the taxes, the option tax revenues apportioned?
And there'll be another meeting following that, too.
Okay, and so, okay, all right, so I guess if there's someone who's not going to be able to be here for the next two weeks.
And, you know, I think.
It just seems like we're okay.
We also welcome comment any way it comes, whether it comes by email, whether it comes by phone, whether it comes to the town manager, so.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, so, so we've got a, we've got a little bit of a roadmap here for a conversation next week and you certainly said that, that the previous speaker said it should, if, if anything, it's all about survival and it shall go to reducing taxes and then the other hand, we should spend it all on Southern Vermont College, you know, so that's our spectrum that we're looking at and we'll, and we'll pick it up next week and talk about it. The next item on our agenda is the TIF district report, Dan, this is pretty perfunctory, would you like to tell us what we need to know here?
Sure, just quick history, as you all know, the town of Bennington approved a tax increment financing district a couple of years ago, as part of that district, one of the requirements is that every year the town submits to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, which oversees the TIF districts, an annual report, the report has to include, among other things, changes to the TIF district's taxable values and the amount of tax increment retained and there are other relevant information as well. Because we haven't bonded for any improvements yet, we, we don't, there's not really a, we're not retaining it tax increment yet to pay for those, to pay for that bond, we did see a reduction in the taxable value mostly because of the demolition of the buildings at the Putnam project and we fully expect.
Expect them if they're gone.
Yes, but we fully expect once the Putnam project is completed that we'll see a significant increase. Some other things have made, obviously, the phase one of the Putnam project has begun and there's a couple of brownfields projects both on the Tuttle site and on Putnam's that Putnam, that were concluded, that's all included in the report, all we need to do, I'm asking you to do tonight, is simply acknowledge receipt of the report so that I can get back to VFC and let them know that this step has been taken and we can get ready for next year's report, so.
I would move that we acknowledge receipt of this report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, the other, not suggesting that you add it, but under employment opportunities, that we did add 100 temporary construction jobs, the other neat thing was that the training program that Bradlof put in place so that many of those positions, those construction positions, actually, the construction workers became more skilled so that it added, I mean, it added value, not just in terms of, of employment at that, at this time, but for the future, which I thought was just really a, an incredible thing for Bradlof to do for our community.
It's a valuable program, this does look back to the last fiscal year, so most of those jobs didn't actually occur until after that, so that will be included in the next year.
Oh, okay, okay.
Motion on the table and has been seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to us, let's hope there's some more progress than that as time goes by. Stuart, last weekend, the last weekend, last select board meeting, we looked at some proposed rental fees for the Willow Park Pavilion, you brought the staff recommendations, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't, I, I think initially we, we talked about simply raising the fees, they were flat fees based on assuming that the pavilions are being used throughout the day, that is not the case, in many cases, they are short-term, relatively short-term use, so we, you folks asked us to come back with per-hour rental fees, we have done so and I present that to you for your approval if you should choose to do so.
Okay, board, any, setting recreation fee rates is up to us now, so any comments on these, on these rates? These, at the last meeting, you encouraged us to believe that this is the, this covers more accurately the cost of, involved of town staff cleaning up and preparing for these events, right?
That is correct.
The previous rate schedule did not cover that and was therefore.
Well, the previous rate schedule is also more than a decade old.
Yeah, and I, I like the per-hour quite a bit, the, the worry on the first proposed change made it like if you wanted to have an hour birthday party, it became prohibitively expensive, so this feels really quite reasonable if it's $15 an hour for.
And you can just do one hour?
A small birthday party, yeah.
Right, right.
Question, who would monitor who's using the pavilion or any of the spaces?
They, they have to come to the town offices to get a permit to use the pavilion?
You didn't answer my question, who's going to monitor?
Well, the, the staff at the town would monitor the use, as you know, well, maybe you don't know, but we have employees that work the weekends in their normal schedule because especially when there are events at Willow Park, including the use of the pavilion, we need people onsite to follow up and to make sure that things are happening as they should.
And what are we paying them an hour?
They're paid the normal hourly rate for municipal laborers, right now, I think it's 2173 now.
Frankly, I think a flat rate is, is much more reasonable, this is really complicated and as I said, you're going to have to have somebody there watching the clock to see that they don't go over an hour for a birthday party or whatever, make it a flat fee and you know, furthermore, the, these are properties that the taxpayers have paid for already and made possible to begin with. And we're going to charge them an additional fee?
This is the cleanup fee, this is the taken care of fee, this is the.
Well, it doesn't say that here.
Well, this is what, it, it costs taxpayers cash to have our parks people go out there and take.
I understand that, but they do that on a, on a regular weekly basis to begin with.
Well, Jim, if you recall, so when, when we develop the budget, we show you line item revenues that we are already generating that offset the amount to be raised by taxes, this is one of those revenue sources and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how much we, we generate. And I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how much we, we generate on an annual basis from rental of the pavilions, but they are used extensively throughout the summer.
I understand that, and, but if I wanted to impromptu, just on an impromptu basis, go celebrate a friend's birthday at the pavilion, could I sneak in under the radar and have that little get-together?
Not you.
But it, you understand my point?
No, you, no, you, I mean, does somebody stopping by the pavilion when it's not used and they sit there and they enjoy a picnic or something? That's not the issue here. We're talking about-
Reserved time.
Reserved time. So these people have access to the pavilion, to the fire pits, to whatever else is provided there for their individual-
Make it a flat fee. I don't want somebody up there watching a clock.
Well, it's also an honor system, and I think that that's worth something in this, especially in this community, but I, but I do like the idea that a small, a small party would not have to pay very much to do this. I like the idea that, that, as Jeanie said, a, a small, small group could reserve it and know that they would be able to have it for a, an affordable fee. Flat rate is going to raise that low number and depress the high number, so I'm, I'm inclined to follow the staff's recommendation on this, but, but I understand your point, Jim, that it's, it's a little bit complicated. It goes 15, 20, 25, 30, depending on how many people are there, and I get that, but that also is-
Yeah, who's going to do that?
Somewhat proportional to impact. Well, I, I think that's, there's probably going to be some honor system involved in that, and honestly, if it's not working-
If someone's in the crowd is part of the permit application, if, if somebody rents it for 26 to 50 people and 52 people show up, no one's going to be there doing a body count. It is an honor system, I mean.
Make it a flat fee.
Or if they rented for an hour, they're not going to get kicked out if they're for an hour and 10 minutes.
Unless there's a group coming, Brad-
Unless somebody else is coming afterwards.
I think, I think, I think we're okay. I don't think it's going to be that strict.
Okay, Jim wants a flat fee. Jeanie and I don't want a flat fee. Should we just vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that it's a flat fee.
All right, anyone want to second that?
Nope.
So, Jim, you're on your own.
Hey, you're in good company.
All right, who else want to make a motion?
I'll motion to accept the hourly rate as proposed.
All right, who have a second?
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
As is your prerogative.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, perfectly okay. Stuart, item number seven.
Yes.
This, this, this is first reading, right?
First reading.
So this is, this, we will see this again, and you're just going to give us an introduction to this. We're not going to make any decisions from that in this.
That's correct.
Although I'm excited about it.
You may recall, some of you weren't on the board at the time, but discussions with the Armory, which is in Vermont National Guard, the Armory's owned by the state of Vermont, overseen by the Vermont National Guard. Discussions began back in 2012 about exchanging land that we own on Bowen Road between the State Highway Garage and the Aurora Branch River and the Armory between the two organizations. The National Guard has been gearing up to construct a new readiness center, hoping to be able to pull their men and equipment out of the downtown and provide them with additional space for greater efficiencies in storage of equipment, being able to move that equipment in and off the site, a whole host of reasons that they are looking at that. Defense Department spending, of course, takes quite a bit of time. It's my understanding now that the potential funding is on the horizon for the Vermont National Guard to, to construct this readiness center. I know they have developed at least basic plans for a concept using the Bowen Road site, and they have asked that the town be willing to exchange the Armory for the open land, 22.9 acres, and it's a straight-up exchange. Part of the requirement is, is the state must do an appraisal of the property to determine that there is no difference in value, and in this particular case, their appraiser came to the conclusion that the, this can be a straight-up exchange, so there is no monies that need to exchange hand when this is done. I'm presenting it to you tonight, recognizing we have at least an additional meeting to talk about this. The, the staff has no specific ideas of how the Armory might be used. That's for a later date. If this exchange does take place, I believe the Armory is not anticipating beginning construction of a new readiness center for at least two to three years, and it will take at least two years to construct. So there is a lease-back provision in this memorandum of understanding that allows them to stay at their location even though we may own it. There is no closing date set at the current time because you folks as representing the town need to act as to whether or not you're willing to accept this particular memorandum of understanding that was developed by the National Guard, state of Vermont, and reviewed by Rob Wilmington, our council.
Okay, great. So Stuart, since I know you cannot be counted on to gush about anything, I'm going to hark back to a, a warm sunny day this summer when Jim Carroll and I had the opportunity to tour the, to tour the Armory and let Jim give you a little description. You didn't know I was going to do this, but I, I know you're dying to-
Yeah.
Say stop. So I'm going to give Jim the floor a minute to tell us a little bit about what we saw when we were touring through the, through the Armory.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's rare, it's a rare opportunity when you let me speak.
Without me.
Without objection.
Pains me, but go for it.
Anyway, the, the, the work that, that our federal dollars have done at the Armory is just incredible. The place, it just sparkles. It's got a commercial kitchen, and I want to invoke the name of one of Bennington's patron saints, Sue Andrews, with respect to her proposal for a place for the, the indigent and the homeless to have a place to stay, and we as the town could offer that on those really brutally cold nights. It has everything that we would need to house those people. We could feed them, they could shower. We have cots. Add infinitum. Isn't that true, Stu?
We do have cots.
Yes.
Yes.
And we could house those people in that. Now, my question to you, Stu, with respect to-
A little more description on what you saw there.
It's gorgeous. It's just beautiful, you know, it's just spotless.
So when you walk in, what are you looking at?
You, a great vestibule. You walk straight ahead, and it's a basketball court with balconies on it. You go downstairs, there, there are classroom spaces on the second floor as well as below, cafeteria, a commercial kitchen. That was a-
That's good, that's good.
And beautiful wood paneling.
Yes, and gorgeous maple floors.
They also went through the expense of putting in an elevator, which makes it handicap accessible. Hundred percent handicap accessible, yeah.
And we assume everybody knows where the Armory is. Everyone here probably knows where this building is, but-
Probably.
It's directly behind the town office building. Just some, there may be people out there that don't know where it is.
Yeah, is there a shooting range in there?
The, I'm going to gush a little bit more. There are going to be so many opportunities that the town can use this for, and it's got a stage, you've got a plays there. But anyway, my, my point to you, Stu, or question that I have for you with respect to, you know, taking possession of this, would we share legally the possession of the building with the National Guard?
No.
It would have to be until the, this quit claim is finalized?
Once, once the closing takes place, I mean, there's due diligence on each side. They want to look at our reports, excuse me, on, on Bowen Road site. We want to look at all of the documentation that they have for the amount of cleanup effort that went into that building to make it what it is today. So that's the due diligence side of it. Once the, there is an agreement for the transaction to take place, there is an official closing, we then own the Armory, and they, then they are there as our tenants.
Okay, so what's the lease?
Yeah, I don't know.
And it's likely to be three years or more?
Likely to be three years.
Okay. And, and, and let's say that, you know, once that's finalized, would it be up to the town to work out any agreement with respect to using it perhaps as a temporary shelter?
We would, yes, we would have to, we would have to take a look at, and we would have to negotiate that with the National Guard. Obviously, they are using the structure. If, if you were trying to find a parking spot Friday afternoon of this weekend, you were going to find one, the guard was meeting this weekend. So when they meet, they, they take up that entire parking lot and that entire building. So it, it, that kind of thing is, is, I wouldn't guess whether or not it would be easy to, to do that, but certainly in the future, that offers, I think you're right, it does offer a pretty good opportunity for us.
But probably a ways off. They keep, they all have lockers there, they all have their gear there, they have chat house stuff. The shooting range was still there, the shooting range is gone, but it became a commercial kitchen and some cafeteria space, so.
Yeah.
I think there was a shooting range down in the basement at one point, so, yeah. All right, other questions from the board? Other comments from the board? Any comments, questions from the public about this? It's a, it's a pretty exciting opportunity. It certainly, hopefully it's not missed on anybody that's tucked right in behind the town offices, which are filled to capacity, and it has a lot of good office space in it already, but it's also right next to the Putnam block where all the public parking will be installed and-
Yes.
So it really does have a tremendous potential upside for our community, and I'm very, very thankful. The basketball court might be a little hard to use because of the way they've crowded stuff in, but-
Concert space, too.
Certainly a concert space. Anyway, I wanted to make sure you know, Stuart-
The ham has been before, and it'll be there again, I hope.
No, just adding my comment about you not gushing about this. I really appreciate that you, you take the long vision on things like this. You've been working towards this for years and having conversations towards this for years, and I'm, I think this board really owes you a debt of gratitude for, for keeping on it and being persistent in the face of odds, and if we, if we sign up for this now and we end up having it in three years, it'll be a long, long-play move, but it'll be a good move for our community, I think.
I think it's going to be very, very good for the community.
Yeah, okay. All right, no actions required on that item tonight, but I would like to move on to agenda item number eight, which is liquor licenses.
Yes, I have for you tonight, seven, eight, nine renewals, one first class, seven second class, and one third class licenses to be renewed in this. Because they're all renewals, we just circulate this for signature.
Managers report, what have you got for us tonight?
Yes, just a, a brief announcement. I don't know that it's been written publicly, but Ron Bull, who has been the chief operator at the wastewater treatment facility for last number of years, a 40-year employee with the town, has retired effective the end of 2019. The assistant chief operator, John Demore, also a longtime employee of the town, has been promoted to chief operator, and another employee, Mike Lane, has been promoted to the assistant chief operator. So this has created an opening in the department, in the sewer department that we intend to fill. The way the, the union contract reads, the assistant chief operator is a union position. He has 20 days, 20 working days to determine whether or not he likes his new position. We have 20 days to assess whether or not he's good for that new position. At the end of those 20 days, we'll begin to develop a, a job opening and position, creating a position and advertising to try to fill it. In another relatively interesting situation, the community development director and the Bennington County Regional Commission transportation planner are preparing an application to the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development for a downtown transportation grant. The focus of this grant is on Franklin Lane. Some years ago, we did a concept plan for Franklin Lane, hoping to upgrade it. As you know, it, it feels more like an alleyway and a driveway than actually a public thoroughfare, which it is. It is one way only at the end adjacent to South Street, but otherwise, two ways. This grant will allow us to develop a design to really make the area from South Street into the new, the rear of the, the Putnam block, the Jay's Hallmark, into a really, we think, more pedestrian-friendly, more aesthetically pleasing right-of-way for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. This is just to let you know that this grant is being applied for. You'll have an opportunity to review the grant should it be offered, and there is a local match, and we believe we have sufficient reserves in the parking fund to cover that local match, which is a 50% local match. So this will be back before you, but Shannon and Mark Anders at BRC asks that we get that word out to folks so that we are aware that something's coming our way. The wastewater treatment upgrade, we are now looking at a winter shutdown. More than likely, over the next several weeks, our engineers will be onsite to determine whether or not substantial completion can be issued on some of the new facilities. I, I did receive a call this afternoon, someone who walks that Harrington Road on a regular basis noticed that there were flames coming out of one of the stacks. It's because we have turned on the methane burners-
Oh, good.
-after a, a number of months of being offline. So there is methane being generated in the digestors, and, and we, we use some of that methane, but we burn off the excess. So people may see flames there from time to time.
I'm not going into yet.
The Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance, of which Bennington is a major partner, has won a $71,000 grant to create a permanent household hazardous waste collection facility. We are looking at the former pump station at the transfer station. It's a concrete building that sits behind the cellist trailer at the rear of the building. It was used to collect and pump leachate from the Superfund site into a septic system down below. Because the flows have reduced dramatically, in other words, the cap is doing what it's supposed to do, we were able to pull those pumps and pump systems several years ago, and now the building is sitting there looking for reuse. We think this might be an ideal situation. If, in fact, we are able to create this facility, it must be operated once a month, one day a month, from April through October. If we are able to do that, we would then be able to eliminate two household hazardous place, collection facility days during the year. So the cost savings may end up being significant if, if in fact it, it is, it is able to be done, and it would be much more convenient for the people of Bennington County. And remember, this, the alliance is a 13-town consortium, so this would be open to all people in the county to come and bring their household hazardous waste collections on that designated day of the month, and then we would hire a contractor to collect that material and remove it from the site. So that's exciting as well. And then the second possibility is, at one point, TAM was operating an asphalt shingle collection facility at its waste collection facility down in Ponle, and they have, they're no longer operating that facility. The state is encouraging the alliance to find another location. We are in conversations with the alliance to consider whether or not placing a container at the transfer station to collect those asphalt singles makes sense for all of our customers, including customers from without Bennington. The alliance would pay for the rental, the alliance would pay for the disposal. All of the costs that are associated with these two things would be paid for either by grants or by the alliance itself, so we would pay our 44% share as, as the major, call it- would pay our forty-four percent share, as, as the major, call it, stockholder in the alliance, but all towns would be contributing to the cost of those operations. And then one last comment. There was, in the citizens' comment earlier tonight, a question about the IACP assessment. They have asked for some additional time. We were hoping to have that assessment, or we thought we would have that assessment by the end of January, early February. They've asked for more time to get that to us, so that has been delayed somewhat while they finish up some of the work they need to do.
Yep, good. Anything on the water facility? Any progress on that?
Nothing at this time. I've asked for an update on the cost to construct the permitted facility. As you know, we already have a permit to operate a facility at the Main Street location. The individuals we were negotiating with wanted to expand that a little bit so they could increase turning rate and things of that nature. Those conversations have, have kind of dropped off for now. I think there's still an interest there, but right now, there's, we're operating as if we're going to build it ourselves. So I've asked for an update on, on the cost to build the permitted portion so that we can decide whether or not it's something we want to move forward. And of course, it would be a decision by you folks as to whether or not to spend the reserves that would be necessary to do that.
Be nice to keep, I'm sure you are, but keep that negotiation hot so that we-
I will do my best.
As summertime comes and windows open, it would be nice to, yes, just keep moving. Thank you. I know, I know you're working hard on that. All right. Questions for Stuart on the manager's report?
I don't have a question on the report, but am I incorrect in believing that there's a mandatory composting ordinance that's coming our ways very soon? I'm not-
Yeah, it's going to be interesting to see how that lands.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Tell us about that story.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I think it was two years ago, the legislature passed a law which says that as of July one, twenty twenty, all food materials will be withheld from landfills, which will mean that either transfer stations will begin to collect food wastes for composting, or individuals will do their own composting, either in their backyards or in some, someplace. At one point, the law required that collectors offer that service to their customers. I think that has been repealed, so that collectors will not be forced to collect those food, food scraps for composting. So we're not really sure where it's really going to end up. I think it's, it's, it's one of those pieces of legislation that, that projects out that this will be easily done. BRCRC has been selling composting bins for the last several years from our Orchard Road site. And many people are, are actually attempting to do that. But I think that as you move into the urban cores, it's going to, got to be a little more difficult for, for the state to enforce that kind of a law on people who don't really have the space in their living quarters or in their, in their surround to be able to compost effectively unless they're willing to transport their food waste to a site, offsite, that will take them. As you know, it's now Casella that's operating the compost facility at the rear of our transfer station.
Right.
And they, they have contracted several years ago now, it's almost five years, with all of the major institutions that were, were developing food, food scraps. So that material's been removed from the landfills already. The unfortunate part, once again, is the market for the compost is not as aggressive and readily available as one would have hoped five years ago.
There's a lot of compost up there.
Yes, there is.
Toward that facility this winter, and there's a lot of material up there, yeah.
So do we have responsibility as a town? I mean, this is something good, and we would like it to happen. And I know BRCRC had a, I mean, the Solid Waste Alliance had a meeting recently where they did talk about composting, home composting. But what is our, what, what is our responsibility, or what are our opportunities to help make this happen?
And would you like to do this as a separate agenda item at a future meeting?
Well, probably would be helpful.
Yes, that would be better.
But we, we are not mandated to do anything, because we contract the operation of the transfer station, so that, that mandate falls to Casella. The mandate actually falls to each individual resident of the state of Vermont, which is why it becomes somewhat, I think, it's a feel-good piece of legislation. It's the right thing to do, but how do you, how do you make everybody do it? So it'll be interesting to see how it rolls out, to see what, what, what comes of it. But it's out there, and the alliance has been working to try to educate people about it and to make, make the bins available. And ultimately, Casella will most likely be providing some sort of a collection facility in order to move that material, probably to their compost facility at the rear of the, of the transfer station. But I'm not sure how successful this will be.
So maybe this segues into your next agenda item, but I'm wondering if maybe we want Jim Henderson to come and talk to us at some point soon.
We could do that. I know some communities are gearing up for it, and other communities are waiting to see actually what happens. And I think we'd need to decide, I'd like us to decide where we want to be in that spectrum, so perhaps that's a, that's a good approach. Why don't we, why don't we talk about that? That won't be for a while, Jeanie, because we've got, we've got a bunch of stuff coming on, but we could-
Well, closer to July, probably the alliance will have a better handle on this, but I'm just thinking maybe late spring.
Mm-hmm, late spring.
April, May.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. That is exciting, the hazardous waste thing in particular. That's, that's a great move. I hope, I hope they can do that with volunteers, but we'll see. The agenda setting for next meetings is a little bit complicated and unusual. So next week, February seventeenth, we'll meet here at six o'clock, and we will have a discussion about the possibility of an options tax and about the ballot, ballot item as warned. That's the only agenda item that we're going to take up on the seventeenth, right, Stuart? Do you have any warrants or anything like that?
No, it is correct.
The only thing happening next week, the following week, February twenty-fourth, do we have a YMCA update coming?
We, we have the Y update proposed for the twenty-fourth. I, I just reached out to Jess from Lo to see whether or not it might make sense, given what else is coming forward, to push that discussion back to when Shannon and the staff are ready to present the recreation priorities. And maybe combine the two into a, a meeting discussing recreation. Recreation is ongoing.
But the timing of that was more because it was their time for a report rather than, I mean, it was, it was their quarterly-
Well, technically, the, the contract, although we started early in the transition, the contract began January one. March would be the first, end of the first quarter. So late March might make more sense than February. But I, if they're ready to go, and Jen, and Jess has indicated that they're ready to go for the twenty-fourth, we can, we can have that there. We do have the Downtown Transportation Fund grant application, which we will be reviewing. The lead service line is a public hearing on the bond. That should not be too complicated or take too much time. And Shire's will be before us presenting their community development block grant proposal for three hundred Pleasant Street, which was detailed just a little bit at the last meeting.
Right.
So that's what I've got on my list of things coming forward.
Did you mention the hospital? Is that-
I didn't, because we've, we've been asked by the hospital to, to push that back to the first meeting in March, which would be the ninth.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry. We spoke about that at one meeting, options tax. So, and then options tax-
Will be on February twenty-fourth.
Will be on February twenty-fourth. Also, that'll be the-
Right, that is correct.
Sort of third installment of that. Yeah, and we'll see what else comes up between now and then. And then we're looking at town meeting. And so I'm going to look at the calendar here just for a second. The, the, what we normally do, this Stuart reminded me, is after a town meeting, we usually have one meeting in the middle of March, and then we go right into reorganization. But I'd like to propose that instead of that, we stick with our regular meeting schedule so that we meet on the ninth and that we meet on the twenty-third, which, which-
What day is town meeting day?
Town meeting is the third.
The second.
Well, second, yeah. Monday is the town meeting, and then the voting is on the third, and then the ninth would be our regular meeting day, which I propose-
For reorganization.
No, which I propose, we have the regular meeting, twenty-third, we have a regular meeting. And then reorganization would happen on the thirteenth.
Of April?
Of April.
Have we gone that late?
That's always the late time.
Yeah.
That's how it works. It's almost as late as it could be, right? Because it's-
Yes, because of the way-
Because of the way the weeks fall. But, yeah. Yeah. So it's the first meeting in April, we reorganize.
Okay.
Stuart, am I missing something?
No, you're right on.
Okay. So, so I think what I'm asking this board is, are you willing to do two meetings in March plus the town meeting, as opposed to the town meeting and one meeting? We okay with that? Okay, all right. Great, thanks. So we will schedule for the ninth and the twenty-third then. At least, we may not have Stuart there for one of them, but we'll have-
We won't have Chad for either one.
We won't have Chad for either one.
Look at him smiling on the way.
Actually, he does, he does, you don't, he's in office until April one.
Yes, that's true.
That's not a step in the face.
Nice try, trying to get out of it. No, we get you at least through March. And then, yeah, the board receipts on the thirteenth, so.
Donald, are you coming up with kind of the, an agenda for the seventeenth and how to facilitate that? Or is it going to be you?
I was planning to, but I was also hoping not to overfacilitate, I mean, facilitate it to the point that we, that people don't monologue too much.
Right.
But that everybody has a chance to speak.
But we, are we planning to have, you know, like an educational piece, an informational piece?
Well, yeah, I think it'd be nice to do that. I mean, Shannon's certainly going to bring some of it, but I, I don't, I mean, at some level, the way Jeanie and I have conceived of this is that there would, it would be an opportunity for people to really say how they felt this money should be spent.
Oh, absolutely. I just, I just, if you guys are on it, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure someone has, was-
I don't think we were planning to bring in a, I don't, I hate to call it a hired gun, but I don't think we were planning to bring in an expert. I think, I have asked Stuart about getting some written information from other towns that have this.
We have that. You also asked for a, a chart of some kind showing the percent impact by assessed value.
Right.
And we'll probably look at the even numbers, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, or hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred.
Right.
So we can give you what an idea would be. And it occurred to me, as, as these conversations have been going on, I might be able to go back into the Department of Taxes website and take a look at perhaps the last three to five years of, of growth or decline in the amount of revenue that is generated via taxes. So that, I think one of the questions was tonight, can we look forward ten years and project what it will be? We obviously can't do that, but we could take a look backwards and see how it's grown.
What it would have, what would have happened had it been in place for the past five years?
Yes, what would have been available to us.
That would be interesting.
I just feel like if people don't understand and have the information that they need, they won't even know what to ask.
Well, I think that's a really good point. And Shannon, I don't know if, if it's possible for you to give up like a short overview again.
Yeah.
I know. I mean, we should definitely have these sheets available.
Yes, all that information.
I mean, the information, so the written information would be there, but it would be kind of nice for somebody to give the three minute-
Just a summary, yeah.
You know, here are the, you know, here's the information, and this is, and just, this is what, this is what you can learn from this sheet. Here's what's available in the sheet.
It's just really hard. We know what it is, but I think a lot of people don't. And I think it's hard for us to put ourselves in the position of a lot of people who are possibly hearing this and trying to digest it for the first time or the second time even. It's a lot to, it's a lot to just think through and figure out even how you feel about it. But you can't decide how you feel about it until you have the accurate information.
Right. The one place that I have found the least understanding is the, the question of where do the figures come from? And, you know, and, and how is that tax collected? And the way I've described it is, it's an added one percent on everything that's sales, particularly the sales that's taxed now. It's no different than, than what is taxed now.
Right.
There's no, it's exactly the same process for everybody. It's just, instead of collecting six, they're going to collect seven. And then we get seventy percent of that difference back. So the, the mechanics of it may be helpful. I mean, I've just got another question that came in right at the moment. Can, what is property, I mean, I think we'll have to describe, what does, what do we mean by property tax reduction? What are we, what are we talking about when we say that?
And that's a chart.
And that's part of what that chart will be about. So I think that, as much clarity as, as we can get, get on that without promoting it or denigrating it, I think would be helpful.
Right.
That's right. And I would like to not, yeah, I'd like to have it be as open-
As neutral and as open.
Neutral as possible.
Right.
Yes.
factual and accurate information.
So, that's great.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jeanie, and thank you for bringing it up. Any other agenda items that, I've missed Jeanie from our conversations. Okay. Stuart, we've, we've caught the agenda items that you had on there. So let's move on to other, other business. And if anyone has any, I would, I would only, I don't normally like to participate in other business because I feel like I talk too much already, but I, I was really impressed with the, with the, I'm not sure if I saw it out there, but we got to see it, the Energy Committee minutes-
Yes.
That they've worked, clearly been working very hard. And they've made quite an effort to break some things down into ideas that the town might take on, ideas that we might encourage the state to work with, ideas that we might get partners working on, things the Energy Committee themselves might do.
Right.
And I think this is a really great document, and I, I'm excited about the work the Energy Committee's doing. I think that's, hopefully their, other people feel the same way, but they're doing what we wanted them to do, which is to look for low fruit. And it's also just, who can resist thanking Ron Bull for forty years of service to the town? That's really wonderful.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Ron. So, other, other business? Jean, what have you got?
I have nothing.
Bruce?
Just one quick announcement. For those who are interested in learning more about the local options tax around the state, Vermont Public Radio is having their noontime show is precisely about that.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. Jane Lindholm is going to be in-
So it's noon and seven?
It's noon and seven tomorrow on Vermont Public Radio.
Or get the podcast.
Or get the podcast, if it's available.
If you can't do it during the day.
Yep.
And, and I will be participating.
Oh, where do we go? Where do you?
Real rogues' gallery.
All right.
What's up with your manager's report?
Uh, 'cause I, I couldn't remember it.
He's shy.
The only thing else I wanted to tell you.
I'll catch the podcast. What have you got, Tim?
Just a reminder that, remember when Merk Cross had died? I sang his praises for all the work that he had done for the town. And oftentimes, people don't hear it until, well, they don't hear it because they're gone. And it bears repeating that Ronnie Bull dedicated forty years of his life to this town.
Doing some pretty hard work.
Yeah. And I, I spent at least four summers with, working alongside Ronnie, and he's been dedicated to this town, and I'm so grateful. But in our Town, Town of Bennington Employee Newsletter, we note quite a few people who's, have dedicated a number of years to the town, and I want to express my gratitude and thanks to them, starting with Jared Austin. It's his first year. Then we have Benjamin Casabla, who has two years of service to the town. Michael Scharshin, five years. Michael Pierce, five years. Kirk Chitwood, six years. Roscoe Harrington, eleven years. Joshua Stemp, fifteen years. Anthony Silvestro, seventeen years. Edward Coyne, twenty-five years. And then there's an obscure individual whose name I don't think many people have heard about. Stuart Hurd has dedicated forty-seven years of service to the town. And I, I thank him for that.
You're welcome.
That's great, yes. Indeed, we all do thank you, Stuart, and everybody else in the town. the town staff. Jeannie, what have you got? Thank you, Jim.
A lot of things.
Chad, I just want to take a moment. Shannon, thank you for the report in our packet. I enjoy reading them when they come up, and thank you, I appreciate reading it.
Yeah, the community.
Yes, sorry, the community development report.
Community development report. It is amazing how much you're doing.
Yeah.
Don't burn out. Don't let it burn out.
I'm trying to help, but.
All right.
She knows how to signal.
I would certainly.
You guys can blame it on, I don't understand.
Pleasant as it is, hanging out with you all, I would look for a motion to agenda. Anyone second?
Second.
Yeah.